We're live.
All right, so good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can everybody hear me in the back? Are you good? All right, I called the meeting of the Jones County Board of Appeals and Adjustments and the Jones County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First item of business is approval of our November eighteenth minutes. Do I have a motion for approval? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So minutes are proved as tight. Is there any old business?
No ma'am.
All right, there are no items for the appeal hearing tonight, so we will move straight into the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. I want to explain the rules of procedure, and we'll do this as often as we need to. The person who is asking for the item that's going to be heard will come up and make a brief presentation about the request. If there's anyone here in support for that, then those people will also have the opportunity to speak. There are some timing conventions, which I'm going to ask Mr. Petrowski to explain. But for the moment, the person presenting and then people in support of that person or that request will speak. Those people are done, then anyone here in opposition to that request has the opportunity to speak, multiple people. Those two items take place, one, two, and then the public portion of this hearing is closed. We don't banter back and forth. So be sure if you are here in opposition, once you hear the presentation about the item, be sure that if you have questions, that you want to know answers from the presenters, ask the board to ask those questions, and please present your comments to the board, not to the audience. Is that clear to everybody? Okay, would you present the timing information?
Yes ma'am. The applicant will be given ten minutes to speak. Anyone else in support of the application can speak also in that ten minutes. Once that ten minutes is exhausted, then anyone else that wants to speak in support is given one minute to speak. Then opposition may begin speaking. If there's a spokesman for the opposition, they can have the ten minutes. If not, that ten minutes will be divided up, as the chairman sees, between those who would like to speak. Once that ten minutes has been exhausted, anyone else who would like to speak in opposition will be given one minute to speak. Once those comments are concluded, that's when board discussion will begin.
All right, so tonight, the decision that's made by this board is a recommendation. It goes forward to the Jones County Board of Commissioners for a final decision. That meeting takes place on January twenty-first, here in the same room. So tonight is a recommendation, not a final. The final comes from the Jones County Board of Commissioners at that following meeting. First item tonight is Oak Mulgy Property LLC. It's a proposal to amend the approved planned unit development for a portion of River North subdivision to allow a thirty-two unit fee simple townhome development on five point two acres. The property is located near six thirty-two River North Boulevard and to the rear of River Point Condominiums. Who's here to speak on the presentation? Would you come up and give us your name and your address, please sir?
Good evening, my name is Childers Adams. Address six oh nine Cherry Street, Suite B three twenty. And I've applied for a PUD amendment for the River Point, proposed River Point Townhome Development. This proposed development is classified as a single-family attached development, located on a wooded, five point two acre portion of the parcel adjoining the River Point Condominiums in the River North community. The site design you have there shows this consisting of thirty-two fee simple townhome units that will be served as, or will serve as primary residences and be separate from the River Point Condominiums. It's comprised of thirty-two townhome lots, three and a half acres of green space, sixty-four parking spaces, and an interior road system. Each lot in this development will be encumbered by a set of restrictive covenants and/or architectural guidelines to be controlled by the developer. It is the intent at this point to annex these into the River Communities Association so they may support that association and those infrastructure items and safety and security that the community is in charge of. County Water and Sewer will serve the development, as well as Georgia Power for electricity, and GFL for trash service, who is already servicing the condominiums and the rest of the community. This development is designed to provide full-time, permanent housing for residents. The character of this development will aim to resemble that of the original River North homes, utilizing neutral earth tone paint colors. Landscaping will aim to preserve and enhance native vegetation, and a twenty-five foot vegetative buffer will exist around the perimeter of the property. Efforts will be made to preserve as many trees and shrubs as possible during the development phase, and townhome clusters will be in sets of three, four, and five units, and have a minimum fifteen-foot vegetative buffer in between those clusters. There are two planned floor plans for this development. Plan one is a three-bed, three-bath, sixteen hundred and thirty-four square foot plan. That will be utilized on eighteen lots of thirty-two. Plan two is a three-bed, two-and-a-half bath, one thousand four hundred and nine square feet. That will be utilized on fourteen lots within the development. Plan two also features a master bedroom on the main floor and a two-car garage, as opposed to the one. While they are similar in character, they feature different attributes to appeal to more than one type of buyer. The fee simple townhome development is the highest and best use for this property, given its size and adjacency to the River Point Condominiums. It'll continue the attached building style that's already in place. Additionally, at completion, the development will have thirty-two homeowners paying dues to the River North HOA, thirty-two new customers of Jones County Water and Sewer, and thirty-two new property tax payers in the county. Since this resides within a PUD, that is the reason for the PUD amendment application. So this can be developed into a resident subdivision and begin providing economic value. One question been asked, is this a multifamily development? This is not a multifamily development. This is a single-family attached fee simple development that will serve as permanent housing. The intent is to prohibit the ability to rent these units. However, the legality of that restriction needs to be verified, and a clause will be included to allow owners to request a temporary variance from that rule in situations of extreme hardship. All in all, the property sat vacant for over forty years and has not driven economic value beyond property taxes during that time. It'll bring new housing to a community and therefore new dues paying residents. It'll continue the attached building style that is presently already there in the River Point Condominiums. Offering new housing stock in River North will attract committed and prideful homeowners. And the two thoughtful floor plans will appeal to both families, as well as older residents seeking to stay in River North, but maybe looking for a more manageable home upkeep. There is a demand for that. And this proposed development will provide a housing type for the missing middle that's currently in that subdivision by having an attached but fee simple development and a new stock of homes.
Is there anyone here who would speak in support of this request? Is there anyone here who wants to speak in opposition to this request? Yes sir, would you come up and give us your name and your address, please? And be sure if you have questions for the applicant, that you address them to the board so that we can then address them as a part of our questioning.
Thank you very much. My name is Richard Kazort, six thirty-three River North Boulevard. I've been a member of the association for over twenty-eight years. River North has started out as a planned community. And with that planned community, they had their own water, sewer, telephone, everything. The infrastructure is very, it is very poor in the water and sewer. Water and sewer, every single holiday, it will break, every single one. Thirty-two additional folks will absolutely tax this thing more than it needs to be. That's one of the items that I see as an opposition to this. It's not just a one-two, it's a huge quantity of water and sewer that's going to be there. It's also in an area that's way below where the water and sewer is currently fed from. So that's the next thing I'd like to do, is how's it gonna, who's going to take care of that? Right now, Jones County Water takes care of that. They're not going to dig up the existing system and put in brand-new, just to service this thing. The other one is construction. The only, there's two ways to get in in River North, the back gate or the front gate. We just spent millions of dollars. We spent, not Jones County, spent millions of dollars fixing our roads. Now we're going to put new traffic on those roads with heavy construction for a certain period of time. Obviously, they can come in the back gate, they still have to pass right over the top of where we just put in millions of dollars through this. I was glad to hear that he was planning on trying to get this into the association so they would be paying taxes and paying those dues. But it's a big chunk, chunk of money for just a small amount of folks coming in. Thank you very much.
Would you spell your last name first?
Last name is spelled C-A-Z-O-R-T.
C-A-Z-O-R-T.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Thank you sir. Anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? Would you come up, please, and give us your name and address?
My name is Jason Payne. I live at one thirty Wimbledon Lane, and currently a member of the River Communities Association that the developer mentioned, and also just got through serving a one-year term on the Board of River Communities. And I can tell you how bad our infrastructure is in River North. Since we do have an infrastructure that we do pay for ourselves, including a bridge and all the street and the whole neighborhood, we are well over a million dollars in debt that all the property owners are currently paying to upkeep. And I respectfully request that a decision on this development be delayed until we had a written agreement between the developer and our current HOA boards that would lay out an impact fee that the developer would be willing to pay to annex himself into our neighborhood before we put more strain on our infrastructure and more strain on our current residents in River North that have been upkeeping this crumbling infrastructure and also upkeeping this debt that we have. Thank you.
Is that P-A-Y?
P-A-Y-N-E, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in opposition? Yes sir?
My name's Ken Fortenberry. I live at two two four Old Ridge Way in this community. I'm not necessarily opposed to this development. However, I agree with Mr. Payne, until there's an agreement between the developer and the community as to how this will be developed, who will pay for all of these costs, I would respectfully request that this board delay a decision as well. Let's have the developer meet with our boards, let them work out an agreement to show how this is going to be paid for so that it doesn't impact all of us. Jones County, you guys can make a decision, but it's no skin off your back. It doesn't impact you because we pay for everything in our community. And for that developer to come in and affect our infrastructure in such a significant way without a written agreement as to how this is going to work out would just be unfair to the homeowners, the property owners in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you sir. Is there anyone else? Yes ma'am?
Good evening. Most of my concerns have already been voiced. My name is Gwen Bryant. I live in River Point condo association. My address is one twenty River Point Drive. I've lived there in April fifteen years. I moved there precisely for the safety of my daughter, who has a progressive disease that is now bed bound and can't even feed herself. She felt comfortable, I felt comfortable. This, as my mother used to say, as best I can tell, I've never seen where this exactly is going to be. I just heard about all this a few weeks ago. But it looks like, as my mother used to say, it's going to be a hop and a skip because I think it's going to be right behind the gym. And my, my condo is closest to the gym of all the four buildings. Even when the storm came the other day, I can't move her out of that room. So I have concerns. I understand that this is supposed to be individually owned homes. That makes me feel better. But I would like to see what the plan is, and I know with the River Point condos, we have a certain number of condos that we can rent. Otherwise, people who are trying to buy into our community will end up not being able to get financed if we have too many of our condos that are rented. So while yes, there's going to be something in there, as the gentleman stated, that would allow for some rental, I would like to see how that is going to be handled. I would like to see exactly who that will be over this, and until, if it is annexed, which would probably be a wonderful thing for us and for them, but who's taking care of all of this and directing all of this? I would like to see all of that. Until all of these things can be discussed, I would like to also recommend that this be put on hold for the reasons that you have already heard, because one of my main things was infrastructure. At this point, our, our HOA dues keep going up just to be able to keep ourselves taken care of. Right now, I pay more, I pay HOA dues to the River Point condo association and also to River North. My HOA dues, and they're getting ready to go up again, are already more than my mortgage. So all of these things need to be worked out because the people that live there have a lot of concerns and a lot of questions. I thank you for your time.
Thank you ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Yes ma'am, please come up and give us your name and address.
My name is Gail Jones, and I live at two two one River Hills Ridge, which we are in a cul-de-sac on River Hills Ridge at one end, and there's a cul-de-sac at the other, and our property is a pie shape, and this development would begin sort of at the edge of our property and go down toward the end of the street. You know, we were concerned, number one, about, so what is the, the entrance and exit to that property? Already, the drive-in is, goes right past our property. And so the, what will they do to put a barrier there to sort of prevent, where trees will be gone, and you know, we'd be seeing, sort of looking right down into the new development, is what I think. Plus, there sounds just more traffic. We even would be curious if they'd be willing to do some sort of a safety fence between. We have had people that, you know, came up through our woods before, and that will add a whole lot more people and their visitors that we know nothing about. The other is the congestion at the entrance to River North, entrance and exit. We, but our biggest concern, of course, is the infrastructure. You know, other people have mentioned all the things that, the water and sewage system, the S curve, the, the bridge. That, it already is, it needs a whole lot of work. And so if these people are going to be paying part of it, and if it would be enough to offset the additional wear and tear on these things, we'd like to know the answer to that before, you know, it's approved. And then I was glad to hear them say they intend to have them annexed in. Those are pretty much my concerns. And if they, the aesthetics of keeping it in, in keeping with River North, it was, we've been out there since the early eighties, and I know that originally, the plan was for everything to be natural, natural finishes, natural woods, and we'd like to see everything kept that way as much as possible.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? All right, then we'll move to questions from the board.
I've got a couple of questions, sir, if you don't mind coming up. You've, you've heard these concerns that people have concerning these things. Can you speak to some of that now?
Yeah, absolutely. And they're all, you know, they're all valid concerns. You have a neighborhood that was put in in the, you know, seventies, and you have aging infrastructure. And this is, this was the purpose of providing this plan to the board several weeks ago, the River North Association Board, and meeting with them last week to discuss a couple of these items. You know, if this project is deemed, deemed feasible after due diligence period, several details, including covenants, architectural control and timelines will need to be worked out with River North HOA and the River Point Condominiums. And all sides are going to have to agree for this to, for this to move forward. As far as water and sewer, in my meetings with Brandon Stark, the superintendent, the plan is to tap into, there's a manhole in the northwest corner of that property that he believes we can tap into. Again, a full engineering design still needs to be, you know, done for this development once, you know, county approval is given, as well as soil surveys and geotechnical surveys as well. And have water and sewer meet with them to approve those plans. So those costs to tap in generally do fall on the developer. You know, so as far as tapping into that, you know, that will be relatively new infrastructure. And they are in charge of water and sewer out there. You know, there's no other way, way around that. As far as the roads go, you know, they do have older, you know, road system in there. And like I said to the board, efforts we made to minimize heavy truck traffic. One of those options is to request the adjacent property owners' access through Rifle Range Road. However, that is a private property owner, and I cannot guarantee that, but that is the first option we're going to pursue. If that's not an option, keeping equipment onsite during development is going to be a priority. So coming in through the back gate, one load, drop those graders off, drop, drop the equipment that needs to be there to minimize that, you know, that road traffic. You know, any verified damage that were to occur would obviously be a cost to the developer to, you know, to repair. You know, this, this development will not be a silver, silver bullet for River North's responsibility for those roads and those road systems. You know, this is a, representing less than five percent of that entire neighborhood. So the contribution they would make at build-out, you know, would be their contribution. You know, there's, there's no way to tell, but those are the items that, you know, I plan to take to, to minimize that. You know, it won't be zero impact. You're going to have cars coming and going, just how there are thousands in there, you know, every single day. You know, but the intent, and as that meeting with the River North Association went, this is a long process that involves all three folks, the developer, River North Association, River Point condos. So still a long way to go, to find common ground and make sure everybody is supportive of this and proceeding with the development. So we, I cannot fix the concerns of the infrastructure in there. You know, but I'm happy to do everything in my power to minimize the impact there and come up with a solution that, that works for everybody.
Some of them were interested in delaying this thing and to reach some sort of agreement on how this thing was going to be paid for.
Yes, so it-
Everybody's concerned with that, you know, who pays for what? And they're asking that it be delayed until you can reach some sort of an agreement on this issue. Speak to that.
Yeah, so development costs generally fall on the, on the developer.
On all of it.
But, you know, there's, if there's additional concerns, then that's something I'm willing to do and was the reason I provided this to them weeks ago and took the time out to go meet with them to discuss some of these concerns that, you know, that they had. And, you know, it's the full intent to work together on this, which is, you know, you have to have in a private neighborhood. There's no way, no way around that. So that is the intent, is to continue working with them towards a resolution and find a way to make this not so onerous where it's not a feasible development, as in it won't be pursued, but do it in a way that takes into account the concerns, you know, that they have and doing what's possible to minimize that disruption.
Thank you, that's all I have.
You've got five point two acres of development. Can you explain to the audience and us the remainder of the property and how it can be utilized and how it will look, both aesthetically and maybe future growth for that? Is there any plans for what's going to happen to the other contracted properties in this big picture?
There's no plans for that, the remainder of the nine acres. As you can see on the site plan, there would not be an access to the rest of this. So there is not a, currently an option to do a next phase or, you know, future development. You know, quite frankly, it may make the most sense for that to be a, a single-family residence on nine acres back there if you can have your own driveway from the road. If you look back on the pictures from the eighties, there was a, in that north, northwest portion there, there was an area cleared out, and if you look at the topo map, so that may make sense. But I think if anything, it would be a large acreage, single-family home. But there's no future way to add on to this at this point. That'd be demolished.
Other questions? All right, so forgive me, but I want to circle back to the agreement concern. I heard you say a lot of things about meetings and conversations and intention. I didn't, I didn't actually hear you say whether or not you were willing to create an agreement and delay this request until that agreement is ironed out. Did I miss that?
No, I mean, to date, there is not a, you know, signed agreement. And like I said, this is the first step towards due diligence. So by no means, if, even if approval was given tonight, would this be, you know, done. So that is the next step, you know, is to work out something with them. I know the River Point Condominiums form their own HOA. The preference would be to not have two HOAs. As the woman said earlier, their condos, based on their age, you know, they are now paying double what the River North dues are in addition to their condo association. So by making these be simple and not allowing rentals, really trying to not have that situation reoccur. So, you know, yes, there, if a written agreement is what's needed, then that's the path that'll be pursued.
So you'd be willing to delay this request until you get that agreement settled?
I would be willing to do that. Can you walk me through what that process would be, since you have to go to the Board of County Commissioners? Would we have to have a rehearing here and then another hearing with the Board of Commissioners, or how would that work?
Help me with that. If we delayed this until there, what would be the process if, if the board were to choose to delay?
Then this matter has to come back here to this board for your recommendation before going to the Board of Commissioners. The Commissioners' meeting is over a month away from tonight.
You know, I can do everything I can to, you know, make something happen. But again, that's, that's involving two separate HOAs and their times as well, so I can't make any guarantee. I can make myself available, you know, weekly. But again, I cannot speak for their obligations and what they want to do and their timing.
Understood.
And what it would take to, you know, the process they would want to run there.
But you would have to, you would circle back to us before you would go to the Commissioners, so it wouldn't be us Commissioners and then back again.
To me, it sounded like after an agreement would be reached, if that's what you require, I would have to come back to you and then to the Commissioners.
Yes, and then, but you don't go to the Commissioners in the middle.
Okay.
You have to go to the Commissioners twice.
Okay, so you're talking an additional two to three months, then?
No.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if he was able to work out an agreement in time to come back to your January meeting, that would have been in time, it would have, yeah, and then that pushes back to the further into the future for the Commissioners' meeting.
So it couldn't make the Commissioners' January meeting? That's the same week?
It's, if, if you make a recommendation tonight, yes, it'll make the Commissioners' meeting in January. If you don't make a commission, recommendation tonight, it will not make their meeting in January.
Even though we're a day ahead of them?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I would have, just with the holidays- And I would have, just with the holidays, I would have some concerns about being able to meet with all the interested parties, you know, before then. So, um, I guess that would maybe, uh, February to see you and then March to, um, go in front of the Commissioners is-
Just wanted to get your thoughts on that because there was a lot of conversation about agreements and so.
A lot of really smart people, they have some really smart comments about this moving forward, and I think they have other points.
Absolutely.
Everybody involved, and that's, that's the neighborhood, I think deserves to have a comfort factor knowing that moving forward, all those, uh, uh, infrastructure issues are being agreed upon, um, et cetera, et cetera.
Absolutely, yeah. There's multiple stakeholders in that neighborhood, so that, uh, that's a part of doing development in a private, um, private community. Absolutely.
All right, so at this point, do I have a motion from the board?
I'm a little bit, is there... Make a motion to delay and revisit?
Following an agreement?
Right.
Let's use the term table.
Table.
Okay. Make a motion to table it until the, uh, set agreements are in writing?
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Right.
All right, so sir, what you have right now is a recommendation to table to get more details worked out for an agreement between you and the other involved parties and associations to then come back to us, yes, Tim, sorry.
Just wanted to mention to the audience that we will mail out notices again when this is placed on the agenda, and I will update the sign that is out at the edge of the road, so you'll be aware. That same notification that we did initially will take place again.
So, that's where we are right now, is table to come back with an agreement.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Folks here for that, man. There's a lot more folks here for the River North than I wrote.
We're gonna do the same mail out that we did for this hearing, we'll do it again. We're gonna mail out to the same people on the same sign, we'll all update the sign out by the edge of the road.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Did I get you all the names you needed?
You know, the one I didn't get was that one lady who said her last name is Jones?
Yeah.
It sounded like the first thing was a guess or something.
Oh, I missed that, I'm sorry, you should have punched me. I was trying to watch your notes to see if you needed help. I couldn't understand what that first gentleman said, this, this gentleman. All right, so we got everybody out of the hall? All right, so ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna move to item P two, but I wanna go back over the procedures again, 'cause some of you were out in the hall. So what we do is the person who is making the request, who has the application is gonna come up, is gonna come up and speak. And then any person here, anybody here who's in support of that will also come up and make comments. Then it's, anybody who's here in opposition has the ability or the opportunity to come up and speak. There is a timing convention. Do you wanna go back through that again?
The applicant will be given ten minutes to speak. Then anyone else that wants to support the applicant will also be able to speak within that ten minutes. Once that ten minutes has been exhausted, then all additional comments will be limited to one minute. Then those who wish to speak in opposition to this request, they will be given ten minutes. And then once that ten minutes has been exhausted, any further comments will be limited to one minute.
And so, just to clarify, everybody who's in support will speak first. Then anybody who's in opposition gets to speak second. If you have questions in opposition to what was said by the presenters who are requesting it, please be sure to voice those questions to the board. We don't banner back and forth in the audience, so if you have things that you want clarified, please tell the board that you would like those clarified. And then when we move to board questions, the board will try to clarify whatever else you didn't hear said by the presenter who's making the request. We're just trying to minimize back and forth banter between the members of the audience. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, all right, so item P two is Robert and Holly Abney. They are requesting to rezone from R one, which is single-family residential, to Ag one, agricultural rural, in order to allow cows to be kept on the property for the benefit... Sir, would you ask them to move on down the hall, please? For the benefit of the Jones County FFA and 4H programs. The property is located at two eighty-three Morton Road, and it consists of four point five six plus or minus acres. So, is our Mr. and Mrs. Abney here? Mrs. Abney?
My name is Holly Abney of three ninety-five Mountain Springs Church Road. Um, as she just said, we are requesting to rezone from a R one to a Ag one for our property on Morton Road. It would be a temporary for the FFA and 4H groups to house their cattle. It's not a permanent cattle, um, operation. There's no financial gain on our part. It is simply just to help house the cattle that are owned by the students. All the cattle are owned by the students. There's no facility for them currently at the house, at the high school, so they have nowhere to go. Our property is two miles from the school. We're not using it in the future. We do plan to build a home there, but as of right now, it's, it's vacant, it's fenced, there's a well. It has all the means that they need to house the cattle. So, um, that's basically our request, is just to have that zoning so that the livestock is able to stay there on the property.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in support of this request? Please come up and tell us your name and address.
My name is Summer Jackson, I live at three oh six Jackson Road. And I have a heifer housed at the property. And as the team, we would like to thank Mr. TJ Abney for his support in letting us use his property. He gets no financial benefit from the rezoning and is doing this solely to help the 4H and FFA students have somewhere centrally to house their beef heifers, since we do not have access to the school facilities.
Your first name is Summer, miss?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Summer Jackson.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in support?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mark Smith, two zero six Ed Etheridge Road, Gray, Georgia. Uh, I'm here kind of threefold, former educator, former FFA advisor, and manager of Flying AA Farms. Uh, this is the second year for these kids. The first year, we housed them at the farm, um, which were logistically, for the kids, almost impossible. Uh, we've got kids from Mountain Spring Roads, it takes forty minutes to get to where the farm is located on the corner of Stallings Road and one twenty-nine. I'm a mile and a half this side, just south of the Putnam County line. Mr. Abney contacted me this past summer, um, with a proposal for us to move the cattle there. There were cattle on his property prior to Mr. Abney purchasing it. And again, the kids own the cattle. My main function with the group is non-paid consultant slash veterinarian slash whatever needs me to be done. So, we're doing it for the kids, uh, because, like I said, there's no room in the high school for them. Hopefully, we're working with the high school, maybe next year, the following, to have something for them there. But now, it's just, it's almost logistically impossible for the kids to get there because only got, only one, one of them can drive. And other ones are, you know, they're, they're not old enough to drive. So, we supply everything from the farm for them. But they, they do all the work, and Mr. TJ and Ms. Holly, they're the ones that, uh, are gracious enough, and it probably costs them money for this to happen. But they're, they, they do it for the kids.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else who would like to speak in support?
John Jackson, three oh six Jackson Road, Brown Oak. These kids, I've been with them since day one, since we started this, and I've seen them all laugh, cry. I've seen them all grow from doing this, and, and this is what helps us out, is just being closer to the school, 'cause the school has no, no room for us. And everyone of these kids have tried their hardest, and they, they, they're out there with them cows every day. And they're, they're, the cows are more well-kept than anybody is. I mean, it's, it's awesome, but they, they're all do great with that. And we wanna grow it with more kids being able to get into it. But, like Mark said, going all the way out there, it is hard. It is hard for everybody to get all the way out to win, into one twenty-nine, almost to Putnam County. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wants to speak in support? Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Would you come up, please, sir? Your name and address?
Uh, I'm David Railey, I live at two ninety-eight Morton Road. I'm almost across from this property. I've been there forty-four years, and we went through a lot of trouble twenty-five years ago to get it zoned R one to prevent things we didn't want there, um, manufactured homes and all, trying to improve the neighborhood. And this is two steps backwards. I'm not against the cows, I'm not against the school, that's fine. If it was temporary, that's fine, but I don't want the zoning changed, because what's gonna happen later? You can put in manufactured homes, even potentially single-wide trailers. Um, that's not, you know, that's not improvement of the neighborhood. So, I'm opposed to it for that. Like I said, if there was some way they could temporarily be there, that would be fine, but not change the zoning. Um, that's my concern. I just don't want the zoning changed backwards from where we're moving forward. That's all, thank you.
Would you spell your last name, please?
Railey, R-A-L-E-Y.
R-A-L-E-Y, thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? All right, questions from the board?
I got a couple of questions, Ms. Abney? How many, um, how much livestock you got on this property, how many cows? Thirteen, okay. Okay, uh, and how long you been doing this?
They have been on the property since July.
July this year?
Yes, and our apologies, we did not realize we were not zoned for Ag, because we purchased the property in February of twenty-three. And when we purchased the property, there were cows on the property at the time of purchase. And they had to be moved when it transferred to us. So we had no idea we were in any violation, um, and that they could not be housed there. But they've been there since, I wanna say July, it wasn't around July, it was right before school started.
I, for one, I don't like what they call spot zoning. Not there's anything wrong with it necessarily, it's just people just don't like that. It's just, doesn't look good to do that, it just looks funny. But what I'm getting at is, instead of changing the zoning, would you consider doing a, uh... My suggestion would be doing a conditional use?
Yeah, I mean, as long as the livestock can stay, that's fine.
Instead of changing the zoning?
It is temp, like I said, it's temporary, and we have no future plans of ever having any type of cattle or livestock, whenever.
I think that would answer the questions about the zoning, and, and, and one gentleman that spoke about the zoning, he was dead set against that. And like I said, it looks like spot zoning, and I don't like that either. So, if you would do that, consider doing that, then that will allow you to do what you wanna do without changing the zoning, and I think everybody can be happy with that.
And what, would that be called again?
I'm sorry?
What, what did you say that would be called?
Conditional use.
Conditional use. And how do we, what's the next step to, to do that?
Could you answer that, Tim?
This board can make a motion for that to happen.
Oh, that's all we-
Yeah, you don't need to do anything.
Oh, okay, yeah, that'd be awesome.
But we're not done yet.
Okay.
Other questions from the board?
Uh, you said temporary, how long do you think that that could possibly be?
I would say maybe a year to a year and a half. I, I feel like we're gonna be ready to, to move over there and start building in about a year and a half.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Railey, that was just up here? Your address is two ninety-eight?
Yes.
You live right across?
One lot over, but yes.
I heard some conversation about growing the program, and that you have thirteen heifers there now. Do you foresee having more than that?
That would be, do y'all anticipate having more?
So, we have three students graduating out of the program this year.
And who are you, ma'am?
I am Summer Jackson's mom.
First name?
Lindsay Jackson.
Lindsay Jackson, okay, thank you.
Um, we have three students graduating, graduating out of the program this year, so that's gonna take our total number of students down to seven. Pending, we don't have any students add next year. But as Mr. Mark explained, we're trying to work on something with the school to be able to get back to that facility. And this is only a temporary housing for them, just so the kids that want to participate have a central location while we don't have access to the school facility.
I understand that part, I'm just trying to figure out if you're gonna grow the number of cows.
Well, so after February, um, pending whatever decision is made tonight, after February, most of, all of these heifers are going back to the farm, because they will not be of age to be shown anymore. We only have, we currently have four heifers at this location that will be able to stay after February.
All right, so after February, do you foresee adding new heifers?
Adding new heifers, yes. The number of heifers, growing the number of he, heifers, probably not.
So thirteen's a good number?
Thirteen is probably a very good number, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if we were to consider a conditional use, we could say a conditional use for cattle to be no more than thirteen? If the board would wanna entertain that. Conditional use is valid if it's enacted in six months, and it's valid for as long as it occurs. So do I have a motion, one way or the other, y'all?
I would move to recommend, uh, the conditional use to accommodate the, the number of heifers that were discussed here in the length of time. I'd move to approve, recommend approval.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
So you have a recommendation for a conditional use to allow the cows to be there? This will have to go forward to the Commissioners, and then they will have to make a final decision in that January twenty-first meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, moving to item three, we are looking at Mr. Will Jernigan from Inman-Soller, who is rec- I'm sorry?
Let me announce the shift, change the chair.
Oh, all right, sorry. Poor place has the quarry in his yard, he's had everything under the sun in his yard.
The Commissioner? Where the Soller folks?
We'll announce you once we get everybody shuffled in.
What's that?
We will announce your item once we get everybody shuffling in. We will announce your item once we get everybody shuffled in out of the hall. So, do you think they all heard the order of procedure already? All right, so ladies and gentlemen, back to item P-three with Will Jernigan and Inman Solar, who is requesting a conditional use to allow a large-scale solar energy system. Property is located off Skinner Road near the Hightaway Place intersection and consists of seventy-five plus or minus acres, zoned Ag-one. Just to back up for a minute, the gentleman here presenting will speak. Anybody here in support of them will be able to speak. And then anybody here in opposition will have the ability to speak. And there is a timing convention with ten minutes and one minute, and most of you've heard that several times, but we don't banter back and forth. So, for those of you who are in opposition, once you've heard the presentation and the fours, please be sure to identify to the board any questions that you have that you didn't feel like were addressed by the folks when they were making their presentation. Does everybody understand? And then we'll move to questions from the board and we'll try to address any concerns that you in opposition may have. So, Mr. Jernigan?
Yep, um, my name's Will Jernigan with Inman Solar.
I'm Nick Stein, Inman Solar.
Nick who?
Stein, S-T-E-I-N.
S-T-E-I-N, thank you. All right.
And yeah, good evening, commissioners and members of the public. So, our proposed solar farm on Mr. Stewart's land, um, is about forty total acres of site impact, um, inside the fenced area. That's where all the equipment is. Right off of Skinner Road. To the west, we have, um, some residential homes. To the west and north, to the east, we have the railroad right-of-way. And then to our south is kind of the, uh, the, the, this is land owned by the Vulcan Construction Plant Company. And then you come up to the north, uh, northwest with, with some more agriculture residential parcels. And yeah, this solar farm, just for folks generally to understand, um, this power produced is tying into Georgia Power, electric lines and serving Georgia Power customers, uh, primarily in Gray. I know, uh, right here, there's a, there's a split between Tri, Tri-County EMC and the Georgia Power Service Territory. But this, this, this Georgia, this solar farm is for Georgia Power. I think we, uh, we're here today because, um, Mr. Stewart and ourselves are, are looking to construct this solar farm. Unfortunately, Mr. Stewart is, uh, wishes he could be here today, but is dealing with a family medical emergency. Literally today, that preoccupied him, but, um, you know, he sends his, his support and, um, yeah, I think, uh, I'll kind of pause it there. I know we'll have a bunch of questions. Um, but just to quickly rifle through some of these images, just to situate ourselves. Um, I guess, starting with some of the, you know, maybe front to back here, just to situate ourselves, is kind of a tax parcel map, um, where you can see the, the two, uh, two mine plants, uh, the railroad, and then the solar sort of situated adjacent to that with the homes to the north. And then kind of going, going further towards the front with the next page is sort of the general footprint within the county, um, about five miles south of Gray City Center. I think our two highest impact visually areas are, are pretty clearly along Skinner Road. Really, the, the only point of frontage there is a couple hundred feet along, along Skinner Road, um, as well as the, uh, the couple hundred feet surrounding, uh, Mr. Henry's land there, uh, that is situated kind of surrounding this solar, or the other way around, rather. And so, I think, uh, we're, we're hoping to, uh, well, we plan to construct a robust vegetative screen where those two sensitive areas are. And we have some ideas to that effect, but, uh, of course, wanted to get folks' feedback on that. And yeah, we're kind of just want to, wanna be very crystal clear and cooperative and open to what those visual mitigations may look like. I do want to point out quickly on the second page, um, it is, the, uh, the land is in a topographic ditch. So, at Skinner Road, it's the highest, highest elevation on the site. And then it sort of descends into a bowl. And our proposed vegetative buffer along this right-of-way is the second page, would, would essentially, uh, be situated such that the entirety of the solar farm visible in that ditch, uh, without the vegetative buffer, would be concealed by a couple of rows of bushes or, or small trees. And this drawing at the top of the page is to scale with angles and measurements and all that. So, that's, we're, we're, you know, we're, of course, understand there's some, there's some pushback here and those are the two areas we think are most sensitive. And yeah, we'll kind of be open to all feedback and open to questions. Nick, do you have any?
No, I think you said it.
All right, is there anyone here who wants to speak in support of this request? All right, then I would ask y'all to be seated for now. And those who want to speak in opposition, do you have a lead person or...
I don't know about lead person, but I'm Mr. Henry. I'm looking at a couple of my entire property.
Would you come up here, sir, please? And tell us your name and your address?
Name's Robert Henry, two fifteen Skinner Road.
Okay.
First off, uh, the property completely encompasses mine. I don't know what they've given you there to look at, but my property is completely encompassed by this solar farm. The, um, first off, uh, my main concern is the solar, solar fires. I've got friends that work in the solar company or solar field and solar fires are a real big problem for solar fields. And the solar field will encompass my entire property. The buffer zones that they talk about, um, it's at a couple hundred feet of my property. There's, my driveway's a quarter mile long. There's no way it's a couple hundred feet of my property that's encompassing, that it will wrap around. What are the, the environmental issues that come with these solar farms? That is the start of Rock Creek, the wash-off from Rock, or from their sediment, or sediment erosion from that building of that site. How is that gonna affect Rock Creek down the line? They just got, the company that's building this just got awarded a hundred and thirty-five million dollar lawsuit against them for not doing a good job keeping up with the erosion down by Columbus. They had to pay a couple hundred and thirty-five million dollars for the property damage they did to their property. Uh, I'm really concerned about that because I've got a pond there. I've got probably ten thousand dollars in my pond, in fish, in maintenance in my pond. They start running off all that stuff and it messes up my pond. What about my fish? The, um, the road construction, that's, how's that gonna mess with the road? It's already a dirt road. The county doesn't pave it. They don't come down there every time it rains. You're gonna have multiple large trucks, semis. I do, I drive for a living, so I know what it does to a road, especially when it's raining and it's wet. They start running that road, cars can't get down that road. It's gonna destroy it. Uh, uh, I work in the field. It, it messes up on the job sites. Property taxes. Are my taxes gonna go up because they put fifteen million dollar worth of stuff on that field? Like, I'm not gonna be able to sell my property to nobody. Are my property taxes gonna go up? What are they giving to the county? Like, what does the county receive from this solar farm? Are they getting tax benefit? Are they paying a couple million dollars in taxes for having this solar farm? And I don't think a month is enough time for us to be able to really get the word out to the people that live in Jones County to show up in force to not want this in our county. If they're not giving us something in return, there's no benefit for the county. There's not enough time for us to get the word out to everybody because I got a letter, um, about a month ago telling me that this meeting was gonna happen for this purpose. I mean, I would at least give us more time to be able to get, get the word out to more people so that more people can show up, either opposition or for this thing. And Mr. Stewart's not here, which is my neighbor. Uh, I'd say at least wait till he can show up to the meeting and say what he wants to say about it, instead of having hearsay from another person about what he believes or how he feels about the, the construction of it. And the buffer zones, what kind of buffer zone are they talking about? Because like I said, I'm gonna walk out of my door and all I can see is solar farm. There's solar panels everywhere. Like, what does the buffer zone consist of? Because little trees is not gonna stop a solar panel. The, uh, the eyesore that it would create for me personally is just not nice. And then, um, also the, um, I think that's all I got to say. I think, yeah. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there someone else who would like to speak in opposition? Would you come up, please?
Hey, good evening. I'm Brad Griffin. I live at one oh four Skinner Road. Yeah, I, I would second everything that Mr. Henry said. Uh, first of all, one month was definitely a very short timeframe. I actually just found out about it this evening, uh, that this was happening. So, uh, I would say that the gentleman that spoke did raise even more questions than I came to the meeting with. You know, what is, excuse me, what is the vegetative barrier? Uh, what does that consist of? I think that probably needs to be fleshed out before a yay or a nay is yielded. What is the impact on wildlife travel? You know, that is a big U shape. There's hardwoods on one side. There's the Vulcan area on another side. Uh, there's the train tracks across from that, more fields. And I don't just mean deer, mammals, uh, I mean, just a quick Google search on the way, you know, right before I came here. Apparently, solar farms, uh, attract a lot of bugs, attract birds, um, and then other predators. Uh, I, I don't, I haven't wrapped my head around all of it yet. Uh, erosion is definitely a concern that I think that more, uh, information should be made available for, you know. I know I have, uh, problems with erosion on my own property because it's Jones County. It's clay. And I would question, what is all that shade, uh, killing grass going to make the ground do? And I would definitely support Mr. Henry. I mean, he is being gravely injured here. His property is being wrapped around by something that is incredibly unsightly. And we don't know what the damage to his property is going to be. I've been to his house. He's got a beautiful place. He's got ponds. What is gonna happen, uh, to that? So, that would be, to me, a humongous portion of this is how is Mr. Henry gonna be made whole here? Because I, I, I think he's gonna be damaged. Uh, I would also resonate the traffic impact on the dirt road. I'm not saying that I suspect that it's going to be profoundly negative, but what is it going to be? I don't know. I mean, the construction, as Mr. Henry said, it is already a dirt road and a big rain does wash it out pretty well. So, uh, you know, after the construction, what does the continuation of that look like as far as maintenance? Go for such a, a project. And, um, I would also question, I mean, what, what, you know, for the unsightly nature of a solar farm? I mean, I, I'm sure there's several individuals in this room that are, uh, gonna be in opposition here tonight. It, it's new to me. I've seen them a long ways away, but we, I've never seen one around here. So, you know, I would question, what is the give and take? You know, what is the county going to get out of, uh, such a project? You know, that sort of compensates us having to look at it, having to deal with erosion issues, wildlife issues, and having to deal with Mr. Henry's damages. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is William Benedetti. I live at two hundred Skinner Road. If you need me to spell my last name, I can.
Please.
B as in boy, E-N-E-D-E-T-T-I. So, probably along Skinner Road other than Mr. Henry, which I, I don't know my neighbors except for immediately to the right and left of me. But my property is at two hundred. I am, I oversee the entire bowl that they're talking about. And I can invite every one of you to come to my house, stand on my front porch, and you'll have a big view of what you get to see. I do not want to see solar panels when I walk out my front porch. I just don't. They're talking about putting plants, trees, whatever. They would have to build a fifty-foot wall from the road height, not further down the bowl, but from the road height, and then I would just see a big wall. I'm, I, I promise you, you do not want to see, you, you don't want to have this happen. Now, Mr. Larry, who, um, Larry Stewart, I don't think he lives there. I know his brother was taking care of the farm back when they had cattle, um, up until probably four or five years ago, right around the COVID time, I believe. They sold off all the cattle. It's been vacant since then. I don't, like I said, I don't think the person that actually owns the property lives there. So, it, it's not benefiting him or hurting him if he's not there to, to see it. It's just a use of property. And I mean, you know, I've lived there for twenty-five and a half years at that same property, at two hundred Skinner. And I can't even get grass to grow in my front yard from when they did my septic tank in the front. If they come through there, I mean, you can drive down Skinner Road on your way home tonight. We just had a little bit of rain and that wasn't a lot of rain that we just had. I mean, it's terrible, the erosion of the, of the dirt road itself. When it rains, my driveway and part of my front yard goes into the road every si, every single time it rains. I put gravel in there, or a crusher run, runs right off into the road. And so, I mean, that type of erosion, and I, and I live there, and they, they do come through and scrape typically right before it rains. The, the amount, the amount of dust, okay, the amount of dust that is, that is gener, excuse me, generated because of people, cars driving by. Of course, dust is gonna get all over the solar panels. They're gonna have to probably get those washed or whatever. If they decide they want to pave the road, well, I'm, I'm personally against paving it. Because they're not gonna add dirt on one side. They're gonna take it from my side. Well, my septic lines are in my front yard. So, anyway, like I said, I, I invite each of you to come down my dirt road and come stand on my front porch and you get to see the big bowl down there. I, I mean...
I was there Saturday, just not on your front porch.
Well, you, you're more than welcome to come anytime. Thank you.
Is there someone else who would like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am?
From this point forward, any comments will be limited to one minute.
Two minute, okay. My name's Rebecca Bullington. I'm just a community member, a friend of Mr. Henry. Um, I have, Bullington, B-U-L-L-I-N-G-T-O-N. My overall concern is obviously supporting our neighbors and friends. The impact to their property cannot be understated. It has been shown that these solar farms can cause severe erosion, especially during construction and after. If there is not a major plan in place, which Mr. Jernigan has not put forward, it could have irrevocable damage, not just to Mr. Henry's property, but any property around it. The USDA has put out an outline of how this should be handled. They have not addressed any of that. They've only addressed the visual impact. That is just the tip of the iceberg and the problems that these solar farms can create. They not only ruin the neighbor's property, they can heavily affect the watershed, the water table, which in this case eventually reaches our major river, the Mollie River. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Laura Gillespie, G-I-L-L-E-S-P-I-E.
Thank you.
I live at ten thirty-one Combslow, which is where Skinner Road comes out onto Combslow. I have a view straight up to the property. I did a lot of research in the last two days on the effects of larger-scale solar panel, um, installations. And they, besides the erosion factor and Mr., the, uh, the owner, um, the pond and his fish, uh, and the groundwater, which most people are on wells around there, um, it creates heat island effects, uh, which can create its own microclimate of more storm damage or more storms likely. It does draw more insects, more birds, bats fly over. And because of the heat that is generated, it can be detrimental for the wildlife. At night, I don't know if they are planning to, I don't know if they're planning to have it lit at night, but that causes a whole... I don't know if they're planning to have it lit at night, but that causes a whole nother problem because we already have light pollution from the quarry.
That's your time, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who would like to speak?
I'm sorry, I, I'd like to add something. I forgot. I've got a petition online with over a hundred and fifty signatures already for the opposition of this solar farm being put in on Jones County.
Thank you. Is anyone else here who wants to speak? Yes, ma'am, come up, please.
My name is Diane Harrelson. H A R R E L S O N. I own the property at one twenty-seven Old Light and Ty Road, which is on the corner of Skinner and Light and Ty, or Light and Ty. Um, some of the concerns, I agree with everything that's in the opposition. Um, some of the things I've been reading about are that they, there's a danger of toxic substances leaking into the ground. Um, if the solar panels are not in good shape, if they break, and what's gonna happen in twenty-five or thirty years when they're no longer needed? Uh, the galvanized metal going into the ground leaves high zinc readings in the soil. The land won't be able to be used for farming or anything else later. Um, the heat from the panels that they were talking about, the birds and the insects, it will incinerate them if they fly over them. We already have serious issues with the pollinators, um, excuse me. Um. Particularly with the pollinators, we all need to eat. They have enough problems, we need them to pollinate our food. And the, uh. Energy created from these, what I read was that there's only fifteen percent of the incoming energy is actually converted into the electricity. And the rest is returned to the environment as heat. I think we already have enough issues with the heat and the ozone and that sort of thing, climate change.
That's your ti- that's your time, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, then we're gonna move to questions from the board. Anybody?
Uh, I have a couple of questions. One of you come up. I've heard some concerns, not here tonight necessarily, but I've heard some concerns about safety issues when it comes to these, uh. These arrays. Are you gonna have power storage there? Have any kind of battery banks or anything to store anything that goes directly to Georgia Power?
Yeah.
Or shoots off directly to them? So there's no lithium battery problems to worry about or anything like that?
No batteries.
Nothing at all.
And, you know, an electronic disconnect switch protecting it from the rest of the grid, so. At the, at the point of intersection.
Are there any, uh, I know that there's, uh, history of spontaneous ignition. I don't know if that's necessarily in the battery banks or if that's from the arrays or, did you get anything like that from, from the panels?
We, we haven't had any problems like that, no.
In, in the fifteen years we've been building solar, there hasn't been a, a single fire or combustion, uh, related incident.
I know that. I don't know if there's any possibility, the way you guys are gonna have it set up, there's gonna be a possibility of fires or not and. Uh, but I do know that if there is. There's a problem. With, uh, having the right equipment and the right, uh, compounds and all to put these fires out. Especially when it comes to the batteries banks themselves. I think they have a, an F five hundred, uh, calculator type agent that's used to put these things out. I don't know if, if we're gonna have to worry about that sort of thing here or not. I don't know if the Jones County Fire Department's even equipped or stuff like that. But it's just some questions that I had, and I, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Should we also reply to any of the other concerns or?
Let's finish with questions from the board, please. They might ask you to.
Mr. Jernigan. Excuse me, Mr. Jernigan. Um, what, are, would there be any jobs created with that? I mean, will you have people there twenty-four seven or, or how does that work?
And Nick can speak to the construction itself, um.
No, I'm talking about.
The actual continuous operation. Um, there'll be, um, I guess at least one or two full-time construction that won't live on the site, but we'll be visiting every, sorry, maintenance operations and maintenance folks. Who have infrequent visits, probably once a month.
Yeah, so I would say like, long-term, no, it's just the, um, O and M folks that come two or three times a year. So it's, it's kind of one of our sort of selling points is after this thing is built, like, there's, you don't have any traffic. There's only a couple of people that come every year to check on it. There's no, there's nothing coming and going really. Uh, as far as during construction, I mean, can't make a promise here, anything, but, uh, many times in most communities, we work with, uh, a lot of the neighbors, especially if, if, if we have a neighbor in the clearing business. Uh, in the road construction business, um, in the grading business and anything like that, I mean, uh, the fence business, it makes a lot of sense to work with the local guys. One, 'cause you're, you know, um, you know, you're working with the community and two, they're usually cheaper 'cause they're right there. So, um, during construction, I think there's some good opportunity, um, for jobs.
So is there any potential that there may be battery storage there?
No.
No.
It's part of the Georgia Power distributed generation program, and there's a contract in place with Georgia Power, and it's, and batteries are not involved. And that won't change in twenty-five years.
Other questions?
There's a lot of, uh, concerns about, um, I think the timing for this from the, uh, residences that, uh. Feel like they need more time to be informed. Uh, I just wanna go on record and say that. Um, my concern is coming from me. Solar panel farms I've seen, uh, Big County, Twigs County, uh. They're pretty, they're pretty substantial. It's just the stepping stone to grow something bigger.
No, it'll be confined to this parcel, um, because that's the tenor of the agreement we were planning to sign with Georgia Power. And just geographically, there's not really much space to expand.
Really? Okay, so. Here's my take on this because my job is to make sound judgments for the citizens of Jones County. Your, uh. Application and your map. Um, seems to fit well with what you've described with the depressions and the next, what, boundaries of railroad, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, sixty-four, sixty-five acres. Now, let's look at a bigger picture. Eighty-four acres are to the west. Eighty-nine acres are to the west. Thirty-six acres to the south. Hundred and thirty-two acres to the southeast, fifty-seven acres to the east. And they're all owned by Vulcan. Now, if I was, uh, sitting on a Vulcan, Vulcan, uh, planning committee, I'd wanna put solar farms on them. And I'd hate to sit here today and say that I allowed this to happen and it grows into a five hundred acre solar farm. That's just coming from me. Okay?
Understood. Yeah, I think if, if that's a concern, uh, if, if it's suitable, part of the permitting process can be to explicitly say that, that it'll be approval of this project contingent that no expansions should follow. Um, and you, you're right, I mean, there's a couple of big chunk parcels. Uh, but you can see some of the, some of the topography lines on there, very intense slopes kind of coming back into the site. Um, so there's some natural geographic boundaries to, to kinda limit the expansion.
I said a hundred acres to the southwest, it's really a two hundred ninety-four acre lot, which already resides in the quarry. I rounded it off at a hundred acres. If I said a hundred and two acres, that makes the bigger picture, five hundred total.
Sure, yeah.
But you're dealing with a slope now.
Yeah, uh, we're dealing with some south-facing slope. So you'll, you'll never see slo- solar on any hills facing the north. You'll only see them on hills facing the south, and that's 'cause of the sun's rotational pattern. Um, and it is, it is sort of, you, you're right, I mean, there's, this is a, this is just a little bit of a hilly site.
How would you address the concerns about erosion and what's gonna be created when you build that solar farm, if you build it?
That's a great question. Can I just finish the, um, and a couple of other things just to finish your question. I think Georgia Power, the, the capacity on the grid dictates a lot of what you can put in. And if we could've put a bigger one or somebody could've put a bigger one, I think that would be in front of you right now. 'Cause that would, that'd be, that would be driving the, the, the solar farm per, uh, development. So this is what's, this is what fits for the, for the grid.
We've been allotted a cap and we built up to the cap. We proposed the cap.
Yeah. And, um, and the other thing is you could always just say no to the next one. Yes, uh, I think solar, um, should speak to, I think erosion was a big concern here, and it's, uh, it's one of our biggest concerns too, um, 'cause it costs a lot of money if it goes wrong. Um, so I think Mr. Henry, um, mentioned there was a big one, uh, I think in the southwest Georgia that caused, you know, over a hundred million dollars worth of damage and penalties. And I think the whole state of Georgia has changed, and not only because of that, but just because we've grown, uh, the permit actually from the state, the stormwater permit just changed this year. Uh, and we've got, for the first time ever, we've been doing this for fifteen years, we're the biggest developer of, um, distributed generation solar in Georgia. And we've never had to put a permanent pond in the state of Georgia. So they're learning from Georgia, the state of Georgia's learning from states like Virginia and Maryland where they have, you know, uh, a lot, uh, more stringent stormwater, uh, laws and regulations. And, and now we're having to do the same thing, so.
And those are, those are, didn't say it from the get-go, but those are called out in the site plan. There's three, um.
They're called out on the site plan, and we'll have, of course, um, our civil engineer, uh, he's from Macon actually. Um, and he'll design a comprehensive engineered stormwater plan. It's gotta be approved by the state of Georgia and the county. Uh, so that's a big, huge concern of ours, um.
But you're sitting here with a bowl with a lake at the bottom of it now. So what are you gonna do? I- if you're building down the slopes, you said you're not gonna be in the gentleman's face, you're gonna be down the slope. You're gonna destroy the grass surface to build, right?
Well, yes and no. I mean, so these are just, um, directly driven piles. So we have pretty much, and a lot of, most of the wire is kept above ground, uh, that runs underneath the panels. So we dr- we drive the I-beams into the ground, which has, you know, little impact to the grass. And then, you know, of course, we drive over it with equipment and stuff. So at the end of the day, and I think another thing that was brought up is.
Talk to us, please.
I'm sorry, the pollinators. Um, when we do plant the grass back in areas that we've torn up, the new kind of thing to do for solar is to plant pollinators, pollinator grass mix to provide that back to the community.
So, yeah, to be clear, we do replant grass and, um.
But you're talking about stormwater lakes and this sort of thing, and you're sitting there with a lake at the bottom. Where are you gonna put a lake?
I, I think it's part of the design from the, the civil engineer. And I guess another sort of bigger picture thing is it's good that we're kinda getting this feedback from everybody, 'cause we're at the preliminary stages of the design. So we have an opportunity to take everybody's concerns, considerations, play around with this thing a little bit. Um, you know, whether it's a stormwater pond, whether it's pulling it back a little bit, whether it's hiding, shifting it so it's out of view of Mr. Henry or the other neighbors. So I think this is a good, you know, we're at a good time at the preliminary design to figure this kind of stuff out, but.
All right, to shift gears for a minute, how, how many typical households is this solar farm gonna produce enough power just to, to fuel?
So at its peak, um, so this is a four point three megawatt site. And I think to, uh, to someone's point earlier, the fifteen percent efficiency thing, to clarify what that means, is that these panels, um, convert fifteen percent of the sunlight in the atmosphere that is received on their panels in energy. So at its peak, four point three megawatts, that's inclusive of the fifteen percent, um, will power about three hundred homes, um. During the day, obviously the sun, sun, uh, sun and shine at night. But, um, yeah, it'll, it'll power about three hundred homes, uh. At its peak capacity. And which is when the sun is shining.
Anybody else have other questions?
Could we, um, just speak to the county's, I guess, the tax benefits?
Yeah, completely spaced on that from the get-go. And that's, I think we put a sheet in front of you, but, so, yeah, the, there's, the solar panels themselves, um, in addition to paying the actual real property taxes on the land, these solar panels are taxed at the rates described there, which throughout the term will generate about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in county revenues. So, yeah, that's, that's, you know, one of the benefits of the county is that property revenue tax rate.
And I guess, well, we feel that, you know, that, yes, that's the money that we put in. Once it's built, we won't be using any of the tax dollars. We're, we're not putting kids in schools, cars in the roads. So it's, we're kind of a good neighbor in the sense that we're paying taxes, but not really using any of the county resources, uh, afterwards.
But you're in the middle of a rural neighborhood that has not got anything like this unless you push over into Vulcan. So it's, you, you're not exactly matching what's in the neighborhood, I guess. But anyway.
What is the, uh, life expectancy of the solar panels themselves after initiation installation? And what is the, uh. Life cycle of the farm?
And then you can tie in House Bill three hundred, too.
So, um, the panels typically last, so the power purchase agreement with Georgia Power, which is the finite duration set contractually capped duration of the project, is thirty years. Um, the panels typically last, uh, about that timeframe. Um, there might be some, you know, maintenance switcher out this year and there. Um, and then, you know, after, after that contract goes up, um, you know, there, there is a decommissioning plan. Uh, and a decommissioning bond associated with the farm such that, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be taken out. There's a very detailed engineering stamped plan about how to treat the piles, how to treat the wires. Um, you know, how to regrass the, the, the land and return it to its, its previous state. Um, and that's now supported by what Nick was saying, House Bill three hundred. It's a, it's a new tack, you know, it's a new law, codified law, um, by the state of Georgia that dictates the specific requirements of the decommissioning plans, the financial guarantees associated with that. Um, so the removal of the system is, is pretty much guaranteed to the landowner and to the county by law. Um, e- even though that's, you know, how we planned for it anyway. Um, the end cycle life of the panel, um, is, you know, it's, it's glass and polysilicon and steel. These are very recyclable materials. In Cedar Town, there's, uh, I mean, you know, Cedar Town, Georgia, there is a new plant being built, solar cycle, um, that is gonna be processing these recyclable materials at a very high rate. Um, so the recycling industry is growing with solar. Um, in thirty years, it'll look much more mature, albeit, but, um, it's, there, there are pathways. In, in some cases, the decommissioning plan is actually supported by the salvage value of these panels, which people will, will pay for the scrap materials or the reuse of the modules themselves.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one more question. Circling back around, who, who's gonna be responsible for the, basically the upkeep of that farm if you're not gonna have people there? Who, who's gonna keep the grass cut? You know, who's gonna be?
We are.
If there's a fire that breaks out, who's gonna be responsible if it, God forbid, gets over to one of the neighbor's houses? You know?
We are, and we've got, um, operation and maintenance companies that come in and take care of all of them. So that, that's what they do. They upkeep the equipment, check the equipment, and then upkeep the grass, the vegetative. I mean, this is, uh, we've been doing this long enough where, uh, it's very important to us to, for these things to look pretty. Because if, if they don't, if they aren't kept up, it pisses everybody off, and then it just causes a bad name for us. So I, I was in Valdosta two weeks ago on a farm that we don't even own anymore, but we built it and called the guy and, and was like, look, you have like eleven trees down. Everybody, as it looks like, please get this fixed right away. So anyway, um, we maintain them, and it's important to us to maintain them, 'cause it just, it's a domino effect in a negative way when it doesn't happen, so.
But you said earlier that it was every two to three years that y'all come in and maintenance them?
No, they're.
Three months, maybe.
Every month, as they said.
A typical, um, and this varies depending on what part of the state we're in, but usually they're mowed about six times a year, um, during most season. And that can vary if it needs to be. But also, if grass gets too high, then it, we shade the panels and it's not good for us either, so.
So who figures out the grass is too high?
The folks that are running the O and M team.
Okay.
And, uh, the, while there is no one on site, the performance of the system, so we'll know immediately if it catches fire, and then dispatches will be placed out to the relevant authorities and stuff. But it's, while there's no one there, these are like very highly monitored systems in terms of performance. Um, and, yeah.
I have one last question. I'm sorry, I know this is going along, um, because we're, we're talking all around it. It hasn't specifically been addressed yet, and that's fire suppression through natural disasters, whether it be hurricane, I'm sorry, tornadoes, or something that causes the equipment to catch fire. And I'm asking because is, they're going to be a burden on the county to provide specific hazmat firefighting resources, training, and/or other types of onsite foam that needs to be in place for this? We talked about how does materials involved in this, and it's kind of a, we haven't really addressed that yet.
Yeah. I'm, you go ahead.
I was going to say, one, we've never had an issue with the fire, and two, what we, a typical sort of process, I'm not sure if your county's fire chief would, but typically, we meet with the chief, fire chief, look at the site plan, make sure that they have the access that they need and want as part of sort of this site plan design. But I don't think that there's, I mean, we never had a fire, and these are mostly metal and glass and aluminum, so I don't think-
Do you like electric fire component, whether it's caused by a trip or something else? I mentioned that big disconnect switch that protects it from the rest of the grid, but in each of these rows, there are disconnects. That, so for example, if one part of the system experiences an issue, it's, you know, it islands itself essentially so that it doesn't spread to the rest. And like Nick said, there's not, there are no flame, you know, there's no wood, there's no highly flammable materials beyond, you know, the electricity flowing through them.
We've had one in Mulchrey, Georgia, the fire chief wanted a training and just to understand how to shut off the system if there were an emergency car accident. So we did, our O and M team came and did a training with the fire team. So we can kind of do whatever would be necessary to make everybody happy.
Anything else? Do I have a mo-
If you have something in place then to take care of situations like fires and whatnot, what type of things causes these fires? You must be, if you've got something in place to combat it, why?
I don't think that, I mean, the Mulchrey one, for example, he was concerned if there was an accident, if a car ran off the road and ran into a panel or something, and then how could he shut the thing off in that kind of emergency? I think it's just a general concern, like if Mr. Henry's house caught on fire and, you know, the fire, you know, they had the access from the other side of his property or something. I think the point, usually what happens during these fire meetings is the fire department make sure they have access to kind of like the neighboring properties and everything else there so that, you know, if something happens, they can get to it. But it's not, it's not a concern for the solar farm necessarily, getting caught on fire.
So there's nothing in the, that solar array complex that's actually going to start a fire within itself? There's nothing that's going to, in other words, there's nothing catastrophic that can happen in there that's going to cause a big fire that we've got to worry about?
I mean, I'm sure that you can find an example of stuff that happens, you know, out there, but in our experience, it hasn't happened on our farms. And I don't think there's, there's not enough high risk where we're planning, you know, there's not, it hadn't happened, or it hadn't happened enough to the other folks that there's a plan to do anything about it because it's so infrequent, I guess.
But it could happen, that's why you've got something in place to take care of it.
And I think, like, each one of these pieces of equipment, you know, like if you start at the whole system, then you go to the modules, transformer, inverters, the equipment within the racking and the modules. Each one of those is individually and independently UL-listed and has to pass all these, you know, national electric code tests in order to be, you know, validated as legitimate electric, safe electric equipment, safety studies associated with those. So even before the solar gets to the construction phase, these equipments are, you know, highly vetted and safety-proofed in industry perspective, from a fire perspective. And if, before we move to motion, is there, would we be able to address some of the outstanding concerns mentioned?
I actually have one more question for you. We just keep doing one more question. What would, what is your plan for Mr. Henry's situation, given how deeply embedded his property is into this bowl?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think there's, and, yeah.
Talk to us.
Okay. So I think, you know, it's truly, there's, and I didn't mean disrespect when I said a couple hundred feet. What I was referring to there previously was that there is a healthy existing tree line along this sort of, you know, this is, the line to the east inside the property is not a property line. That is sort of an arbitrary line drawn with Mr. Stewart in order to kind of prevent it from creeping into the lake, into the existing forest area. So I think what, where we were coming from here with a couple hundred feet was that there is a very healthy existing tree line up until where there isn't. And where it isn't, I think, you know, it's our goal to supplement where there are a couple of big evergreens as much as possible to basically make it invisible. I mean, I have only two copies for you guys, but this is, and Mr. Henry can share these with you afterwards, but these are a few examples of pretty strict vegetated buffers we've shared in the past that can, you know, take the form of a bush or a tree that we would, you know, certainly do. And at the end of the day, it's like, you know, we can plant as much as we need with Mr. Henry.
I was just going to add to that. I think what, short of coming to knock on his door today to sit down with him, but what we'd like to do if Mr. Henry's open to it, is, you know, we're at this preliminary design stage. And what we did with a similar situation with a neighbor in Tifton, in Tiff County, we met with the neighbor and kind of walked their property with him and said, look, these are the kind of the main concerns where my family hangs out, this is where I'm going to be looking, you know, can you move these panels over here? And so we've got sort of the luxury on Mr. Stewart's property. Yes, we got to keep this amount of panels because we've got a contract with Georgia Power for the power, but we can move it around. So if we need to, like, move some of these over here to sort of make a lesser impact on Mr. Henry and the neighbors, then we've got, we kind of have that opportunity to do that now.
And as you'll see, we kind of, there is a gap in the system that coincides with the gap in that vegetative buffer. So that southeastern corner is intentionally, you know, empty with solar, one, because there's a power line there, but two, because that's the most exposed stretch of his property abutting the solar. And to Nick's point, if we can further consolidate to the corners, then that's possible at this design phase.
Okay, anybody else got one more question? Do I have a motion?
I have a question.
No, ma'am, we're to motion, I'm sorry.
Is there an opportunity for us to address a couple of quick things? I'll make it sixty seconds or less.
You've got sixty seconds.
Okay. So I think we mentioned the erosion control plan, and the reason we don't have a formal hydrology study or civil set is because that comes when the formal construction design is being done, typically after the approval is given by this committee. The, there was mention about some travel and animals. Each of these arrays will be fenced in such that if animals happen to, you know, get close, or if kids happen to get onto Mr. Stewart's property and get close to the panels, there's a fence protecting that's, you know, up to the national electric code. And like we mentioned, there's going to be, there's still going to be space for animals to move about outside of these fencing territories, even in the right of way.
And through the farm fences, actually designed so that small animals can come and go and it doesn't impact them.
Yeah, okay, nice. And there is going to be no night light, so that won't be a concern. We talked about the grass.
Pollinators.
Pollinators.
I think we're at sixty seconds.
I think we are, too, so I'll stop it there.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion in oppose of it due to not having the soil study.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Is there a condition that we could return?
We're in the middle of a motion. All right, so I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what his motion was exactly.
Kyle is in opposition.
I'm in opposition due to not having the soil study of the runoff in Mr. Henry's case of the pond being blew.
And then I have a second. Is there any other discussion?
I second, not for the same reasons.
I understand. All right, all in favor of the opposition motion? Okay, so at this point, our recommendation is a denial that will go to the commissioners on the January twenty-first meeting. Ours is the recommendation, theirs is the final decision. So you will get to talk to them, and all these folks in the audience will also get to talk to them. Okay?
Quick thing, if, you know, it's probably noted in the notes that one of the oppositions, because we didn't have a soil plan, you know, if we were to come back with something formal, would that, you know, I guess we'd be able to present that new data, I guess.
Can I present that to the commissioners?
Yeah, you can supplement your application as it goes forward to the commissioners.
Okay, understood.
That meeting will be on January twenty-seventh, I believe, is it? Is it? Yes, it is. You're right. Thank you.
It's later than usual, it's usually the first Monday.
January twenty-seventh, that was?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, here in this room at six o'clock.
And besides the erosion plan, any other information you're looking for?
This board will not be seeing the application again. We'll be going to a new board.
So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And so ladies and gentlemen, if y'all want to be part of that, again, it's January twenty-first, here in this room at six o'clock. They'll be speaking to the commissioners who will make a final, who have the ability to make a final decision at that point. All right. I lost my agenda. Comments from, is it comments from the audience?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Are there any comments from the audience?
I had a comment, but it doesn't matter. I was just going to say that, you know, of all the places I could have lived, I picked Skinner Road, the dirt road with nobody on it, and so I could have peace. I didn't pick the city, you know, I didn't pick a big town. I picked the dirt road on Skinner Road.
With cows across the street.
With cows. And that's where I put my money, that's where I invested my future, is only dirt road with nothing. So I don't know that that matters to anybody, but that's just kind of a life. You choose where you live and-
I put my heart and soul in my house.
That's where we choose to live, is only stick to dirt road.
Raising a family, and I didn't build one, ran soul, huh?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
I don't want to sit in my son's house, don't look at me, but.
It's just where you choose to live, and we chose that twenty-five years ago for me, and now I'm faced with change that someone with bigger pockets than me has, so I'm kind of hurt.
Please come to the commissioners' meeting.
I'm kind of hurt by that.
Well, and I know that this board is not the board that's going to be sitting at on the twenty-first. Some of y'all might be here, some of y'all might not, I don't know, because I don't know any of y'all. But, you know, my thing is, yes, we are out in the country, just because we're out in the country and there's lands available. But we are residents in that area. How many, how many solar panel farms or whatever have they put in a residential area? It'd be different if you drive from here to Columbus and you go down there into whatever county that is.
Taylor.
Taylor County, and you see solar farms. The land I used to hunt on in Perry, eighteen-hundred acres, Charles Ayers bought it, and he sold it, he did a solar farm. And that's fine, that's Charles Ayers, he's a multi-gazillionaire. But say, we're not gazetadors, you know, we have, I own two acres.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we choose to live there. Like, we chose that spot.
Exactly.
We chose that property because it was a dirt road, because it's quiet, because it's not in the city. So that was just my point, was we choose.
Well, you do have a recommendation from the board to deny that request, and it took into account many things that maybe didn't all get voiced.
Right.
And the thing about, as far as about the fire, and I know y'all talking about the fire and the safety and stuff.
If something caught on fire, Jones County couldn't put out my house.
I mean, it's, we have a volunteer, we have a volunteer fire department.
Yeah, it's no offense to them, but they couldn't.
So, I mean, and-
Anything y'all could do to them, so.
Yeah.
Please come to the commissioners' meeting, please.
All right, thank y'all.
All right. Any other comments from the audience?
I just had a, is there any way we could push this another month to give us time to get the word out to the people in Jones County? Because I don't think half the neighbors on, half my neighbors on Skinner Road, even though that they're having, they're planning on-
Wouldn't that be a question for his commissioner? Wouldn't that be a question for his county commissioner? To address.
This is governed by state law. We've met the legal advertising requirements, so this will be on the agenda for the commissioners' meeting on January twenty-first. If the commissioners choose to table it, they could do that.
So there's no way that y'all could push it to another month? You're telling me it's staying on, you can't do it?
That would have been a conversation to have before this board made their recommendation. The board has made their recommendation, and now it'll be transmitted to the commissioners, and will go on their agenda January twenty-first.
Talk, talk, talk with your commissioner. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Does anybody want to talk about that? All in favor?